Okay, we'll get started if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen Town and Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today is a work session. First item on our agenda is Nazar Commons. They are not here yet, so we're gonna go right to discussion item two for John Kajowski and Sons Minor Subdivision. Can they hear great?
John?
Come right up, please.
So, the planning department has received and reviewed a minor subdivision application which is proposing to subdivide an existing hundred-and-twenty acre farm parcel to create two new individual lots. The owner's intention is to transfer one of the newly created parcels as a corporate distribution to his son and his son's wife while retaining the other parcel for continued farming use. Planning Department has received and reviewed a subdivision map prepared and stamped by Nate Corwin, last dated February seventh, two thousand eighteen. Proposed subdivision is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. Staff has reviewed the application, subdivision map, and the short environmental assessment form. Staff recommends that the subdivision of the lots will have no significant impact on the environment, health, or welfare of the public. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency without the need for coordinated review and further recommends that the planning board issue a negative declaration pursuant to SECRE. The subject parcel is a hundred-and-twenty acre irregularly shaped farm parcel and is located on the east side of Manor Lane in the hamlet of Jamesport, approximately twenty-six hundred feet south of Sound Avenue. Lots presently improved with several agricultural structures in the southern portion of the property. I've got an aerial and a ground level view of the structures on page two of my staff report. Subject parcel is located within the APZ zoning use district which requires a minimum lot size of eighty thousand square feet. Current subdivision is proposing to create lots of sixty-three point nine acres and fifty-six point one acres, both lots conforming to all dimensional requirements of the APZ. The applicant has submitted a title report. There were some initial issues that were identified with the title report. The applicant has since submitted a supplement to that title report. I am waiting for review and comments from the town attorney's office. The subject parcel under the subdivision application was the subject of a Suffolk County purchase of development rights. One of the issues with the title report is that it didn't actually provide a list of the CNRs, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of the exact conditions of the sale of Suffolk County development rights. But that information will be brought up in the town attorney's office reviews the title report. The plan has been referred to Suffolk County planning commission for its review and comment on the subdivision. Any comments or conditions for the planning commission that are received will be incorporated into any approvals granted by this board. The proposed subdivision boundary appears to coincide with the location of an existing high tension electric transmission lines which run east to west directly across the property. It is unclear if a utility or access easement exists on this property, as that was one of the missing pieces from the title report, and there is also no indication of any sort of easements on the survey. Existence of any easements on the property must be verified, and if they do exist, the subdivision map must be updated to reflect their locations.
That would be the CNRs, right?
Yeah, and that's, we just haven't received a copy of that. So, if there are no easements on the property that are recorded, the planning board should require the owner to coordinate with LIPA and PSCEG to define the easement areas and record the easement agreements with Suffolk County Clerk. The property is located within the Riverhead Water District Extension number twenty-eight, and there's a twelve-inch water main located within the Manor Lane right-of-way. The proposed subdivision will require approval from the Suffolk County Health Department. If approved, the map must be filed with the Suffolk County Clerk and Suffolk County Real Property Taxes. At this point, the only real main issue is getting the title report reviewed by the town attorney's office, identifying any conditions that were imposed on the purchase of development rights and the existence of any easements. Beyond that being that there's development rights where sold, I mean, we're not looking at any sort of residential development. I mean, it's really just gonna be kept for farming so that they can distribute the parcels amongst the family and the corporation.
We should have asked who you guys were before we started, but if you could for the record-
Um, sure. I'm Mary Keith Brigham. I'm an attorney with Richard Lark. He's the attorney of record on this file.
And I'm John Kajowski.
Okay, thank you. So, the development rights, um, do you know what, if, how many were sold on the property, or?
Well, we opened this before.
I know it'll be verified, but I'm just, would like to know from my own experience.
I believe they were sold on the whole block.
On the whole thing?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm led to believe in again.
Done? Done, please, it's done.
Okay, that's fine.
And you should have received copies of the CNRs. You know about it.
Yeah, I did, and I, again, I forwarded them to the town attorney.
Agent property is a house of two acres. We have the rights on that. Okay. Other than that, everything is sold.
Yeah, and that was, I believe the house is an out parcel from this, so I mean, for the hundred-and-twenty point zero eight acres, I believe the development rights are gone. I mean, if anything is identified in the title report, that'll be brought up, but I don't anticipate that we'll find much there.
Okay, so we have to wait until you get that to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, once we get the information, you know, once we can verify the existence or the need for the easement for the transmission lines and if there's any conditions for the sale of development rights, once I get that, town attorney's office, if they're okay with it, will move forward with the public hearing, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
You had also requested an attorney opinion letter?
Yep.
And did you need a printed copy of the CNRs in the title report?
I'll take it just for the files.
And then you had already said you had this from the application.
Yep.
And did you need Department of State for John P. Kajowski and Son in sync?
Okay, anything, we'll take it.
Or, and how many copies of the maps did you need? I have them updated. The description is being drawn up by the title company as we speak. I just haven't received before I left the office.
I mean, if you wanna keep two, I'll take the rest, or do you need that many?
I have sixteen, so I don't know how many you need.
Give them to us before the public hearing.
Yep, yeah, we'll have it, and one for the board.
All right, well, it appears at this point it's very straightforward. Don't see any issues, so as soon as we're ready to get the information, we'll do the public hearing and move it along.
Sure.
All right.
Do you know how long it'll take for the town attorney's office to review the file?
It shouldn't take, I mean, I can follow up. There was a little bit to go through, and I mean, it looked like some of it was kinda tough to decipher, but, you know, I'll have them on it, and as soon as we get word from them, I will communicate with you and we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't hear anything in a while, feel free to check that.
Definitely.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, do you wanna wait or stay on hold for another? Um, the office conversion, is that, is anybody here for that?
Uh, no.
Brooke?
Yep.
All right, yes.
I guess we'll do that one next then. So, the next item we'll do, out of order, is number three, Mason Residence Office Conversion.
So, we're revisiting this application. This was briefly presented to the planning board back in two thousand seventeen.
Oh, I'm Brooke Efferson. I'm the architect for this project.
All right, so we had briefly visited this application in two thousand seventeen, just to get the planning board's approval. We have a site plan application to convert an existing single-family residence into a mixed-use building, which will consist of a mental health professional office on the first floor and a residential apartment on the second floor. Site plan is proposing to add about sixty-three hundred square feet of impervious asphalt, parking, and traffic circulation area, handicap access ramp, lighting, landscaping improvements, as well as a six-foot-high stockade fence along the western, northern, and eastern property boundaries. The applicant has made a application to the town board for a special permit, being that professional offices within an existing dwelling is permitted in the APZ with town board's special permit approval. The applicant did receive the approval from the town board. Resolution was up for a vote at the January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting, previous Tuesday. There were a few conditions included in the special permit approval. One of them was that in order to mitigate potential traffic congestion at the site, there should be only one practitioner operating within the site at any given time. One significant one was that the vegetative buffers between the neighboring residential properties shall be maintained at all times, and that any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced by the property owner, and that the applicant or property owner must obtain a valid rental permit from the town for the apartment on the second floor. We will also require a covenant to be filed, which includes all the conditions of the special permit from the town board, and if the planning board sees appropriate to file any additional restrictions or covenants.
Greg, I see on this easement from the neighbor to the west.
Yes.
Do you know if there, I see that yellow-black cashmark on there. Is there enough room for that guy to drive in his backyard? I'm just wondering if he has a prescriptive easement.
There's nothing that's existing on the property. There's no easements that exist on the property. I mean, it appears as though that was sort of just the neighbor sort of driving his vehicles around, which we're actually going on to-
Yeah, I see that.
We had brought that up at the initial meeting. I don't know if, you know, the applicant had reached out to that, the neighbor, 'cause what's gonna happen is when that fence is installed, that neighbor is no longer gonna be able to-
This is driveway.
Well, it's not the driveway. It's, the driveway is actually in front of the house. As that dotted line goes through her property, the driveway is actually goes right to the house. It doesn't go-
Oh, in the front.
Yeah, it's to the front. It's not to the side.
How do they get to the back?
Over time, since this house was, it was vacant for a little while, and then somebody was living there before she bought it, my client bought it, they just made it themselves to get their vehicles to the back.
Right, but I think what Ed's asking, if a fence goes up here, how are they gonna get back here?
That's something the neighbors are gonna have to work out together, because it's on her property now, what he's using to get to the back.
Are they aware of this?
They were notified. I haven't talked to them, or I haven't seen them anytime I've been to the house myself, but they were notified every meeting that's been going on since two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, I mean, they did get notified from the town board's special permit mailings. It was required to mail within two hundred feet, so they were notified that there was a special permit application, and they will be notified when there is a planning board hearing.
Right, but specifically about the driveway issue?
Sometimes people get those notices, and they don't block because they don't think it matters.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that the applicant should reach out to, you know, I mean, we can get your owner information for the parcel. It's something, it's something that we would want to address prior to any issues, I mean-
Agreed.
Before we have a public, or after public hearing, you've gotta address it.
Right. I will give Corinne, she's the owner, I will give her his information. I do know the contractor who's been there for the interior work that we have a permit for, that he's not finished. I know he has spoken to the neighbor about it, 'cause he was there so long, he ran into him, and he mentioned to me that he spoke to him, but I will make sure that she gets his information.
I mean, he may have enough room to access it, it might not be tight, but if not, he may have a prescriptive easement.
I know in the back, there was an aerial shot. You can, that's potato acres. There's a fence and a gate, so I don't know if he's associated with them.
These are different properties, 'cause what happens is this parcel here is connected, there's a little farm road which goes to the north of the subject parcel to access these greenhouses. We're talking about the house to the west. He's sort of, this is where the encroaching is happening.
But I know he has a gate and a fence that separates the property, so I don't know if he's associated with them at all.
I mean, without having the, without being able to speak to him, we're not gonna be able to come up with anything right now, but just know prior to the public hearing, that's something that the applicant will definitely need to come equipped with some information and have some conversations with the neighbor.
In order to get to the back of this property, he's actually encroaching.
He's going, he's going on his neighbor's property.
Well, he is.
Our intern, I had a building that I didn't own in the alleyway. I had a prescriptive easement. It means I had no other way to access it, so I was able to use it. And I'm just wondering if this guy's not gonna have a case, maybe, which went ahead and off the pass before.
Okay.
There's an issue.
In case he has one.
Right.
Maybe a survey.
There was a question in here about the parking.
I did receive, the plan was actually based on a survey. I mean, it doesn't show the worn-out dirt.
I mean, physically mark it so everybody can see what the issue is.
Where it is and where it's gonna-
There's a question in here about the parking calculation.
Well, what was the question?
Well, let me-
He has to keep going, right, Greg?
Yeah, let me run through, I don't wanna get off track. And I just kinda did some color representation. The blue is gonna be where the asphalt area is. The green will be landscaped area, just so that you can see where the traffic circulation will be on the subject parcel. The action is considered a type-two action pursuant to SECRE with no further environmental review required. The execution of the site plan required a variance from the Town and Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals for exceeding the permissible impervious coverage within the APZ. The site plan was proposing fifty point three percent impervious coverage, where the maximum was fifteen. The applicant did receive that variance from the ZVA on appeal number eighteen dash thirty-two dated September thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. The site plan is proposing a new enlarged curb cut at the entrance to the site from State Route twenty-five. Proposed curb cut will be sixteen feet wide. A permit from the New York State DOT will be required for work within the New York State right-of-way. With regards to the parking, in the rear, behind the building to the north, they are proposing a total of seven parking stalls. Five parking stalls will be adjacent to each other, and then there are two parallel parking spaces along the western side of the parking area. They include one handicapped accessible stall and access aisle. When this application initially came, there was a comment that if they provided one additional stall beyond the seven, they would qualify, they would be able to come and convert it to a medical office without coming back for site plan. I'd spoken with the applicant and the design professional, I think it was just, they wanted to retain some yard in the back and some sort of landscaping and some sort of area, because there is an apartment up there, so they kind of went away with that. So, if they want, if at some point they want to convert it to a medical office, they'll just have to come back for site plan, but they're not going for that at this time. The traffic flow has been redesigned. Initially, it was just showing an entrance, you know, a westerly access on the westerly side of the building, based on the potential for some sort of congestion where people are coming in and exiting the side at the same time. The applicant redesigned it, so now the traffic flow will come in, applicants will enter, come around the eastern side of the building to access the parking area, and exit through the westerly leg of the traffic flow.
Is a sixteen-foot enough to get in and out, like, two cars?
Well, so, town code required twenty-four feet, but being that it was an existing curb cut and they're making it larger, the chief building inspector didn't take an issue with it when he reviewed the plans. Sixteen feet, I mean, is wide enough for two cars to get in. The only staff just recommends that there should be shown in the plan arrows which clearly indicate the traffic flow, and they should be painted on the asphalt. And there should also be clearly indicated, "Do not enter" signs on this westerly portion, so that we don't, you know, we don't start with a head-on traffic situation. The town code requires a landscaped buffer area of at least ten feet in width wherever a business use or industrial use joins a residential use. The code requires that planting shall be evergreen shrubs which shall attain a height of not less than eight feet. There's currently a row of deciduous hedges along the eastern boundary. When I looked at the plan, I'm gonna make the recommendation that this existing vegetation, being that it does lose its leaves in the winter and it does not provide a significant screen, the applicant should revise the plans to show the same landscape buffer that they're providing on the western side. The buffer on the western side consists of eighteen Atlantic white cedar shrubs, and they're all, as I said, they're also proposing a six-foot fence. Now, the plan appears to show the six-foot fence going pretty much to the front of the property line. When I looked at the town code, town code requires buffer plantings and fencing to actually be set fifteen foot back from the front property line. I'm gonna also make the recommendation that because it's in, there are some residential uses to the east and west, in order to, instead of having a six-foot all the way to the, you know, where it needs to go, it should be four-foot fence from the front of the house, just so that it kinda keeps the look of a residential use.
One point we might wanna make is, the fence on the western portion, you know, bring that fence in two feet in the property line, and that might eliminate that other issue. Without saying you have permission to use it, you know, we could maybe fix it, understand?
A couple of people help.
Yeah. We have room there, so that's possible.
As far as landscaping along Main Road, the site plan is proposing five black oak trees. Site plan approval should include a condition that these trees will be maintained from the ground up in order to maintain visibility for people. I don't believe there is a specific requirement for a caliper. I mean, if the board recommend, you know, we've usually been going three-inch caliper.
It's little, and it sticks.
Before the public hearing, could you find out from your property line to the neighbor's house, how much physical, you know, property?
From the driveway to the-
From his house to your driveway, I mean, to your property line to his house.
Okay.
From the house here to this line right of way.
Okay.
If it's really tight, we-
And if we can move the fence in a little bit just to allow him some room to-
Without saying we're allowing him, but we don't have that authority yet.
The site plan is proposing the installation of seven wall-mounted LED light fixtures along the southern, western, and northern elevations of the existing building, as well as four post-mounted LED gooseneck lighting fixtures. Two of these fixtures will be located on either side of the entrance to the driveway, and two fixtures are located on the western side of the main building. All proposed fixtures are dark sky compliant, and they comply with the three-thousand-degree color temperature requirement. DOT, one of the requirements for DOT permits was that they're going to replace the existing sidewalk along Main Road with a concrete sidewalk, minimum five foot in width. Site plan has been revised to include note that they're going to replace and repair the sidewalk.
Is DOT gonna do that?
No, the applicant's gonna have to do that. That's gonna be a condition of their DOT approval. Again, we touched on the issue with the driveway to the west. Yeah, that garage, that garage is gonna go, and there's a shed that's going to be relocated to the northern grass area behind the building. There were some building and engineering comments which have been addressed through revisions. It was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and they considered it to be a matter for local determination. I'm awaiting comments from the water district and the fire marshal, but I mean, it's not a really intense use. I don't imagine any significant comments are gonna come from those departments.
These are fifty-foot wide lots, right, in that area?
It's actually seventy-five foot.
Now, what's up, what about next door?
Um-
I don't know what next door is.
It's maybe a little bit, the lot next door might be a little bit smaller. The lot to the west might be about this size.
Because that's, you know, I went out to that site, but I didn't miss last, this last week. I don't remember what's in the back, but, you know, if he's using that on a daily basis to get to the back of the property, he's gonna be a problem.
Looks like he originally had property, and he put his addition on the house, looks like, maybe his garage or whatever there is.
You know, absolutely, yeah, it's gonna be tough. Is that a single-family residence?
Right now, it is.
The one to the west?
Yes.
They have to provide a dumpster.
Yes, there is no dumpster location shown on the plan. Now, in terms of-
Is there any specific area you would wanna see that?
I mean, there's really not much.
Not really much space right here.
It's convenient for the-
Well, that's, that's it, yeah, there's two, these are, that's a parking space and that's a parking space.
I mean, for the use you're talking about is a dumpster warranted. It may be just a couple of cans that got picked up, I don't know.
But it's not a medical office. You're not medical waste or anything. It would just be for-
I guess it's up to, you know, the applicant.
I mean, any dumpster, the code requires that any dumpster enclosures be screened, you know, appropriately. I'll have to check, I'm not sure if it requires a dumpster. I mean, I think it might be dependent on the use.
There's no medical waste, you know, there's no medical waste, I mean, you know, it's-
You know, how much, does she, does the applicant have a practice right now?
Not her own space.
All right. I mean, maybe she, maybe prior to the public hearing or something, or at the public hearing, she can just address the amount of refuse that, you know, is produced by the use.
Tell us what the code requires to, you know.
If it actually requires a dumpster. All right, so, yeah, those were the main issues. Like I said, we're gonna have them change the landscaping, provide the evergreen buffer on the eastern boundary. I will look at the code to see if it actually requires a dumpster. Have Ms. Mason reach out to that neighbor, and let's address that prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
So, the public hearing is scheduled for February seventh?
Correct.
Do you understand, is that enough time to post everything?
Yes, because January's a long month, there's an extra week, so we have-
Okay, so you understand what you have to do to post and advertise for the public hearing? Okay.
Yeah, we've actually, we've got the posting across the street, so you can come pick that up on each walk. Yeah, beyond that, does the board have any other questions or any other issues with it?
Nope.
Thank you.
See in a few weeks.
You'll see my partner. Thank you.
If, if you want, Chairman, we could do the rest of our business.
She's just about breaking off.
Oh, that's not weird.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I spoke to Jim. He's not sure the project is gonna go forward or not at this point. He forgot about the meeting today, so he suggested maybe we just, I'll just go over the project with you guys, and we'll continue with the, we can approve the public hearing, and then he'll get back to us next week and let us know for sure whether they wanna go forward with it.
So, if we don't know that they're gonna go forward with it, why would we go through twenty-two pages?
Oh, no, I wouldn't expect, you know, I would go talk to you about it very briefly.
Okay, we'll do that then.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is Nazar Commons. It's actually number one on the agenda.
No, no, we won't do that. So, basically, this is an existing professional office complex on Main Road in Aquabog. They're looking to put on a third building. There's two existing buildings. They had gotten this- Um, they had gotten a special permit and a variance for, um, floor area and, um, impervious surface. Um, their first special permit expired. They got a new special permit. They've, they've been in the process of getting the special permit and re-getting the special permit for a while. Um, this is the first time I had looked at the site plan and I had prepared a, um, a report October fifth, um, which you all have. You all got it back then, and at that point, we had decided we weren't going to, um, come to the board until we got an additional plan that addressed a lot of the comments. Um. The applicant had come in for a meeting in in November, um, had a lot of, um, some issues with the consulting engineer's comments, which, um, I'm gonna give you a copy of too. I think I might have emailed this to you, but I'm gonna give you a copy. Um. So it was decided we were gonna come in for a discussion, just, I was trying to, um, just because the applicant wanted some input from the board before revising the plans, um, for things such as cross-access and what have you. Um, the applicant did have, um, some issues with number eight and number nine in the consulting engineer's comments. Um, but Vinnie feels very strongly about those, uh, except that they wouldn't need a variance for, um, gravel in this district, um, which Vinnie says in there, and we did tell the applicant that's an erroneous comment. It would be up to the planning board whether they'd allow, um, gravel parking in this district, but, um, there, there are quite a few issues with the site, um, as far as, you know, right now, when you pull into the site and you get to the end of the parking area, there's really no mechanism to turn around. Um, and the new plan kind of has the same issue. Um, there were, there were a lot of, um, not a lot, but several cars parked illegally on the landscaped area, um, in non-parking stalls. Um, you know, and I'm not gonna go through it all with you now, but, um, one of the issues was cross-access to the, um, professional office to the east, where there was a future cross-access, um, required by the board in the past, even though a, um, dumpster enclosure and some landscaping blocked the area in question. Um, that office has gravel parking, um, with angled parking, so the aisle is very small and there are low overhead wires. I don't really think that the cross-access is really feasible in this case. But, um, there were some issues with fire department access and I'm, I'm not gonna go through it all. If the board is interested, they could read the report. I also.
That would be interesting, fire department.
I also got, um, comments from the fire marshal, which I'll provide, um, at the November, end of November meeting with the applicant. Um, Craig Zidick had come in and, um, provided some input how, on how they could, um, provide for a turning area for.
Jared, give me a moment.
I'm sorry, Dick, I just don't turn to the left.
Thank you.
Um. I'm sorry. Um, the fire marshal had originally concerned about vehicles coming, you know, in here, making all these turns and coming to the end and having nowhere to to turn around. But then we had talked and the fire marshal felt that the vehicle could come and back up into here and come around. But, um, these, these red areas are some of the areas we marked that might have improved radiuses, um, but then they would leave, lose some parking. And again, there's no, there's really nowhere to, um, turn, turn around back here. When I was at the site, people were turning into some extra-wide, um, striped areas to turn around, the handicapped access aisles, because that was the only area. Because I was sitting here and like five vehicles came in to the end and said, oh, I have to back up, go into a, a striped handicapped access aisle to turn around and get out. Um, and the, this new building and new road and parking area has that similar issue. Um.
Do they have a drainage problem now?
Um, in the past, several residents have complained about when the special permit hearings were being held and things like that, there was a lot of controversy about drainage. Um, now, they're showing, um, there's a retaining wall around the whole area to be developed and two pipes coming through, which you can see on this next page.
They come from the north?
They come from the north, um, and it's to take care of like the tributary area that would normally go to this wetland, which is actually not shown on the plan yet. Sorry. So there're these two pipes coming here.
Which way?
Well, the water would be coming.
That way?
South.
Where does it?
Join the other water coming north.
Because all the topography kind of comes to this wetland area.
Yeah.
Um, it's a town wetland, um, they would need to get a CAC permit. Um, they may have gotten one in the past that expired.
Quite a wall, too. It's about six foot high. Stonewall.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how tall it is, um, off the top of my head, but, um.
Twenty-one, six to fifteen.
Vin, one of Vinnie's comments, he wanted to have a calculation of, um, the capacity of these pipes and the rate the water would be coming through.
Yeah.
Um, because he felt that if the, all the water wasn't, you know, going through, it could back up and comprise the soils and the retaining wall.
Yeah, it would.
Um. So. Some of the existing, um, parking area, the stalls are too long and the aisle, the traffic aisle is too narrow, so they'd have to make the, the stalls shorter and the aisle wider. Um. I don't wanna really get into it too much.
I don't see what they're gonna do.
So my, my biggest concern, I can tell you right off the bat, is, is the emergency vehicles. You had a fire back there.
They'll, they'll al- already be people that are, are employed in the building. They'll never get in, you never get in there.
Well, again, the, the fire marshal, as per the last meeting, he seemed okay with this as long as there were some changes made so to the rate, turning radiuses, so the vehicle could back up into here and then come out. Um.
Is, is, is that a reflection on this one here that we have?
Let me see.
Well, no.
No, he has to make the additional revisions in terms of.
He hasn't made the, any of the revisions requested at this point. Um.
Okay, because here, there's no way.
Yeah, no, and we pointed out when we met them, uh, at the last two, Steve. We met with them.
But if he was to make, you know, put in these islands to help with the turning radius, that would.
Right.
Some stalls would be taken out and they don't have, they only have one extra stall to begin with, so I'm not sure how it would all be accomplished at this point, but.
So how could we schedule a public hearing if there's not an updated map for the public?
Well, he, he didn't sound really, you know, um, um. What's the word?
Concerned?
Yeah, well, not concerned, but first, first of all, it's about having the public hearing. He said it was pretty much up to us. I mean, we could, can just wait until some, next week and I can.
No, they don't make sense, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean.
At this point, it might be prudent just to hold off until we hear back from him and then we can, have him come back in two weeks and update the board then.
Absolutely, hold off on the public hearing.
I mean, we can schedule, we can cancel the public hearing until we.
But he, he indicated to you that they may not wanna move forward with the project at all.
Correct, correct. He had indicated that before we had the last meeting, but then we had tried to work some things out to maybe make it feasible. Um.
Um, to have him come back in two weeks or three weeks at, or regular nightly meeting, I mean, that's, this is too long of a discussion for a night meeting.
Mm.
So he should come back to a work session and then let us know.
So at this point, we'll cancel the public hearing?
I don't see any sense in scheduling. I mean, if he just told you on the phone that they're not sure if they're gonna move forward, why would we schedule it?
Why schedule?
Okay.
Yeah, because I think it also, if we have to go forward and alert the neighbors and then we cancel it, that's not fair to them, no.
Yeah. Hold off.
So we had the resolution on today to set the public hearing, so, um, I guess you can.
Table it.
Table it.
Does he give you this pipe that goes across here?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there a cross-section in the pipe to show what the elevation is?
Well, Vinnie was concerned about the, if you look on, um, number eight and nine of his memo.
Yeah, Vinnie commented on it.
He talks about, um, it would appear the culverts are intended to maintain the natural flow of stormwater from the northerly tributary
Mm-hmm.
to the low and the southerly portion of the site. In order to, the capacity of each pipe is specified as gallon, six thousand.
Yeah.
Gallons per minute. In order to verify that the capacity of pipes provided is adequate, design calculations using the rational method must be provided.
I understand that, but what I'm more concerned, more concerned about is the elevation of the pipe.
Um.
How high is it in terms of, there's, there's gotta be a hole in the, in the wall.
Yeah, that, I'm not.
So he could say which way the water could, could be going, or he's.
Unless it's provided on the detail.
I didn't see it.
Okay, then, then it's, I guess it's not, I don't.
All right, I'll guess the bull's in their court. Let us know what they want to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any public comment on the resolutions?
Look, it always gets these crazy, what team always gets these crazy ideas, Bob.
Make a motion to table resolution number three for Nazar Commons for, for further information. So moved.
Second. Motion made and second and two, table resolution three for Nazar Commons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution is tabled, uh, number two on the agenda.
Move resolution number four of the Red Planning Board for a, uh, public hearing for Masson Residence Office Conversion. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four, Masson Residence Office Conversion. To schedule a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, resolution's approved. Uh, do we have any public comments on any matter for the planning board? Any public comment? Okay, um.
I'll move the minutes of the January third, twenty, twenty nineteen meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of January third, two thousand nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Um, at this time, um, I'm gonna ask the board to go into executive session to discuss, uh, some personnel issues. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
A motion to go into executive personnel issues. So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.